Mr. Chairman, we are live.
Okay, welcome back, everybody. Today is September the 12th. This is the afternoon session. Our next agenda item is update on Commissioner Board. I really don't have much to report on this because we haven't had many meetings since last time we reported. Trying to think.
You're on that Stibnack Gold Collaborative, Winter Rec Forum, EMS, LEPC.
Yeah, EMS and LEPC are tomorrow from 11:00 to 2:00 at EOC. I'll be here for that. We haven't had anything since.
Central District Health, Boise Forest Coalition.
Larry's on doing the Boise Forest Coalition now, or somebody.
Okay. Community Gardens. So there is legislation that they're looking at changing on that Community Gardens this year?
I mean Guardians.
Guardians, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and they don't really bring me into it unless it gets pretty controversial. There's Kathleen and there's a couple of the people in the community that handle all those. But they're talking about legislation that gives them a little more, I think, authority to actually take someone and put them in to a hospital or into assisted living. If there's no family, there's no one that can make that decision, get more authority to do that.
One of the things that came up is that, once you accept them into the Guardian program, you have them for life. So if they live for another 30 years, you are mandated to work through that. And there is some legislation trying to pass as far as funding for them because there's really no identified funding.
And in some counties, it's a huge problem. We have maybe one a year. Some years, we haven't had any. There's a gentleman up in McCall right now that has, is close, but he also, they also discovered he has family. So they're bringing the family in. Family can make those decisions, not the courts. That one's not too time consuming if you want to do that one.
We'll wait till next year and see what happens, so.
The ILRCC meeting is the same day as I see down below, the first one, which, so I'll miss the very first meeting. And they're giving a, Steph's giving a presentation during this meeting in McCall, more about fire wise and mitigation, that kind of stuff. So I think it'll be a lot of repeat stuff I've heard before, but can't really tell you about, anything about that because I haven't been to one yet. But we are going to meet the end of the month for the Roadless Commission, and I think we're meeting up in Coeur d'Alene. They haven't set an agenda or a time yet, for sure. It's, it's hard to get 20 people together in the same day.
Yes, it is, especially in remote areas.
So that's about all I got. There's just nothing really going on right now.
Mine, YCAP, they are still actively working on it. They've done really well through this, this COVID situation because they've been able to continue with their schools and their education, and so financially, they've been very well supported. Daycare is something they're still working on. Terry is working on the school up here, as well as the other conversation around the community center. So I think we're going to get some kind of a daycare environment in Cascade, as well as one in McCall, which I can't disclose yet on what's going on there. So they're really working hard with us on daycares. And part of that is the early learning that the EDC is involved with has grants out there at $15,000 for every head that's in a daycare.
$15,000 for every kid in daycare?
Yep, in order to broaden and expand buildings and set up new centers.
Is that long term or just at one time?
One, one time deal. So still working actively there. Our Road Advisory Board is on hold right now. The Economic Development Council is just, we've got so much going on right now. The Economic Development Council. I, I keep thinking back to your turn, or your thoughts about changing that name, but we need an educational piece, and I've asked Lindsay to make sure that the community understands, we're not bringing new people here. We are supporting those that currently live here. So we're trying to improve the experiences for our locals and be supportive in that area. We're doing a lot of education improvement through the Workforce Development Council, where we're, you know, creating opportunities for people to learn and be more successful here. We're working on housing. We're working on, economic development is a tool to create sustainability for your, your communities. And that's what that's all about. We're not out marketing people to come here. We are taking care of those that live here. And that's all part of economic development. Let's see, what's my other ones? Fair Board. So Fair Board is still meeting to be able to hold annual meetings that are, or regular monthly meetings that are noticed with an agenda and make them legal meetings. So this next year, we are going to have to continue to figure out how to improve that situation. The fair and the rodeo continue to have conflict, so we are going to have to figure out what that leadership is that can take that and move forward with it. So lots more to do there. I have not been to a Fair Board meeting, a legal Fair Board meeting, in probably six months. And so continuing down that path.
Well, can I ask you a question about that? Are they happier, though, that they had the fair one weekend and the rodeo the next weekend?
Not really. I think the fair was happier, but the rodeo definitely was not because it's not, it doesn't have the same, it's not the same event. I mean, it's, it's just fractured. That was the, the feedback that I got from some on the rodeo.
The rodeo, they want to have a great affair so they can draw those kids in and that crowd as well?
Yeah. And it's one community event, you know, instead of two. And so that's going to be a conversation this next year. We're going to have to figure out what the resolution is on that, on the fair.
We need more grandstands. I think if we got, if we could even maybe double the capacity of the grandstands, I think that thing would fly.
I do, too.
But there's too many people standing around outside, no place to sit, no place to, so they go home.
Yeah, I agree 100%.
Yep.
And there is legislation going this year that is being proposed to change the, what the structure of the Fair Board is. It could be an advisory board instead of.
I saw that, too.
There would be some big changes there.
Well, and we have the authority as commissioners to say, you know, we no longer require your service on the Fair Board, thank you, but we're going to go back out. We can do that, but as you find out, there's, it's a revolving door because the parents of those 4-H kids are the ones that will get on the Fair Board. Then when the kid grows up and he's done, the parent's done.
They don't have that right now. They don't have any parents on there.
You used to have a leadership, a leaders council.
They still have that in 4-H.
And all the parents were in charge of all that stuff.
No, I think it's a greater conversation still, so we will see who gets elected and, you know, next year, we need to focus on the Fair Board and solidify that, whatever that looks like.
Um, maybe what might work is to go out for a bigger board, get more folks on there.
And I've been asked them to do that.
What, are there five now?
There's either five or seven, I can't remember. But I've just asked them, solidify with the people that will show up. Not everybody needs to be on the board. It's the ones that make the decisions on the board. Other people can just volunteer the day of the event. So there's lots of conversations around Fair Board we need to continue to have.
Yeah. I didn't even realize that the rodeo and the fair, I thought they were contiguous some way.
They were until this year. Well, this is the only year that they've been split on different peaks.
Well, they wanted to try it, they tried it and figured out it doesn't work. So hopefully next year.
Part of them might like it, part of them don't like it. It's who's calling me to talk that I'm trying to go with.
Well, that's one of the problems with boards is, is getting a mix of people that actually express and interest in that, that are willing to work, willing to be there for, you know, and they can't be expected to be there forever. This is one of the problems with, I think, boards. I don't care who, who it is, after a while, you kind of need to.
Press the button.
So if we, if we, because I've read this in another situation, if we limited your term with the Fair Board to two years, and then you had to either get reappointed or.
They have their own bylaws.
So they know, I only have to put in two years and I'm out of here.
Yeah.
Maybe they'll work harder in that two-year period, is what I'm trying to say.
They have their own bylaws. We don't put any of that on them.
No.
That is their own. But again, we're going to have to have some work sessions and figure out what's going to be successful.
Still, even though there may be some, I'm not, I don't know that much in particulars about it.
It's quasi-governmental, it's kind of like library board.
Yeah, it's kind of, but some places, it's got to be some oversight.
And our oversight is to the funding that they receive? That's why last year, we started auditing their books. They'd never been audited before.
Yeah.
Our oversight is to make sure taxpayer dollars are spent the way they're supposed to be spent.
I think that's true of all boards, pretty much. I said eventually, you know, you have to, I'm a question, I guess.
Well, the only other option we got is to make it part of the clerk's office, and the clerk would have to put on the rodeo and the fair.
They'd love to do that, I'm sure. I also serve on NACO and the SRS Committee, which I've been asked to go back to Washington, DC, so I'll leave tomorrow. And we are meeting with our legislators to create that stable funding platform. So we have something that we can budget each year. Right now, we've received money in '22, we will get money in '23 and '24, that we know what that will be. But the long-term plan is to create that trust fund. And so we're still working on that. I participate in a Western Region meeting every month to discuss what's happening. And the fires are a large part of that conversation now also, because there's so much money being spent on fires that it's being eaten up, and mitigation needs to happen also. Lots of conversation around that. I'm on the governmental, IAC governmental, and you guys did get a packet. There's a number of resolutions this year that are trying to be passed through, a few new ones, but for the most part, it's cleanup of legislation. There's still a lot of legislation going on around what it's going to look like as far as sales tax versus property tax versus, you know, the legislature is still really working on what, what they're going to try and do to revert, or to reduce property taxes. So lots of conversation around that this year. I'm on the Transportation Committee, but we won't meet until the board, or until the IAC conference. You advise, you have I Advisory Board, I have not, I missed the last one that she had, so I'm on that one, too. And V Corp, V Corp is still very active. I ended up reading the proclamation for September is recovery month at the Rock Event. That was a fun event to go to. I'm supposed to be on the Southwest Idaho Rack, but Ryan still is saying that they have not approved that back in DC. So there's money to be spent.
Last time they approved that was several years ago.
Well, he did ask again two months ago for all of our applications. Once they send it back, it's supposed to be an automatic approval if they don't get it signed off in 30 days. So I mean, it should just be imminent.
I applied to that several, some years back, and it's, well, they never, what is it? It's never got to, got around to it. So I don't know what happened to my application, it just went, it's just gone. Nobody ever responded to it.
They couldn't get anybody in Washington to approve those.
Nobody to bet, you know, and I, it's kind of a weird deal because, first time I've ever actually applied to something and go, well, we'll be hearing something soon, never.
Yeah.
I know.
It's been that way for years.
Three years ago, four years ago.
It's been that way for years, and same thing with the SRS funding. We've been, that goes back to when Gordon was in the Western Region in 2012, 13, and we were pushing back in for a nine or a $10 billion trust fund. Take the interest off and use it, and it's still not happened. It's just like, wow.
Got to get over that some way, but, and, you know, if you look at mitigation for forest fires now, that could come to a taxpayer, you know, that's part of their responsibility, and, and Pilt and SRS help pay for that, so. I'm on the Workforce Development Council. I head to Lewiston next week for two days up there. They have received a lot of state funding for workforce development. The government is very much interested in CTE learning. I met with the superintendent in McCall, and CTE is a huge part of what they want to put into the school system, the certified technical training. So the Workforce Development Council, we're going to be working collaboratively with the schools to create this and put it back into the high schools. Shop, you know, class, those types of things, teaching welding, teaching the things that are needed in this area that you can't find.
Computer skills.
Really happy about that. And I think that's it.
We've got that at my house.
I've been kind of trying to keep, I'm trying to keep up with the waterways planning, you know, and that's, I'm just looking in here, trying to find some dates, but it, I believe it's 20th or 21st this month, or it's final date for comments, I believe. And anyway, we'd have to look and get that, I'd have to go back in to get that. But anyway, that's something that I'm hoping it gets out to the public. There's been plenty, pretty, quite a bit of advertising, you know, publicity on it. So, you know, I think that, that, we had last, last week, we approved a little bit of a financial extension for there. But anyway, it sounds like things are pretty much on track with that plan.
So where do we read the comments? You have them?
We got sent.
There's, the waterway plan is, is complete, and it's here for you. And if you don't have, you must have.
No, I got it, I got it. I just wondered where the, where the comments were going.
They'll go back to the, to.
That website?
The Galena, is that right? And they will incorporate comments, or at least discuss them, incorporate that into, and then after that, I think we have, I believe it's in October, a public meeting here, we'll conduct a public review. And I would expect to have quite a bit of interest in that. Big deal.
Well, I know we, we got a lot of interest in it when we tried the Thousand Foot Track Act.
So I, I missed, anyway, that was, I've been keeping up with that a bit. And then the other one is the Waterways Committee, and I missed last week's meeting because they had it the same time as we had ours. Anyway, I thought, I was thinking he might have changed that meeting to another day, but typically, it's on the first Tuesday.
You know, Ed, is Waterways working on an ordinance so that we don't have jet skis jumping these wakes from these dipper planes?
Well.
Are they going to push on?
There's a lot of talk about particularly the wakeboard type waves in.
No, this is guys, when they were fighting the fire, Kevin talked to me about it, and those planes would come in to skim the water off, the jet skis were coming right in behind them, and they were racing them and all that kind of stuff. And I don't think there's an ordinance against it.
No, that would be.
That would be us.
That would be, that would be just an enforcement issue if it's in violation of anything.
Well, according to Kevin, there was no violations. He said, we need to write ordinance to do that. I said, you guys need to do that at Waterways.
I don't think that that would be specific because that was, it's a unique use.
Very unique use.
On the lakes. That wouldn't be typical of, of this planning process.
Well, the interesting thing is, it's happening on Redfish Lake when they were skimming down there, too.
I can see that happening, but I didn't, I didn't realize that that had become an issue. I wouldn't, I wouldn't advise them to get in front of one of those planes, though.
No, but we don't want to kill anybody, and that's the thing. You know, that's what was happening, is they were racing the planes, and like, you guys can't do that.
Well.
I thought there was ordinance already against it, but.
I don't think that they specifically mentioned that one. I guess we could, I could, in my comments, I could maybe comment and ask if you.
Yeah, talk to Kevin about it, see how it feels.
The Waterways Plan is not going to do that, though. That's just a plan.
No, I don't think so.
Ordinance, separate deal.
An ordinance might. But one of the things, Waterways Plans, they're, they're just making some suggestions, you know, and that's up to us, is how we receive those. What it is, is they're doing a really, in my opinion, a really good job of overview of what we get out, and looking at, you know, the identified issues, and maybe.
I was a little frustrated that DEQ just started their two-year review. I, we're right here, we need good data, and DEQ's two years out from providing good data, so there's going to be an update to this plan at some moment in time.
So anyway, soil and water, I missed that last meeting also, but basically, they're a very active group. A group, I gotta think, they're doing, their primary focus seems to be on water quality overall right now. And I think they're working with the Water Resource Board to try to come up with hopefully some solutions, or talked about stuff like Fish and Game's proposal of siphoning and various things like that, possibly bringing cooler water into the reservoir, you know, issues like that. Wells have gotten a lot of talk from them lately. I don't know if they've come into any resolutions on that, but they've talked a lot about it. So anyway, I appreciate what they're doing and the effort they're putting in because they do, they're staying course, pretty much, on trying to deal with water quality and so on issues.
So my question is, is there a mission statement? I don't really understand what their mission is.
So Conservation District?
Their, kind of, their tentacles are starting to reach out.
First of all, it's a state, it's a state thing. It's not a county thing or a federal, it's a state thing. There's a state committee that actually doles out the funds to the different districts, but they monitor, they, they manage the 319 grant program, which is federal money. It's like they have districts contracts with Department of Health and Welfare, they do different functions for the federal and for the state, and mostly point and non-point source pollution. And you know what that is? Point source, you can find it, non-point, it comes off the old hill, that kind of stuff. And they deal with sewers, septic, and irrigation. They have a lot of programs to convert flood to sprinklers. They fund a lot of those conversions, and they do.
So they deal with, with septic and.
No, not so much septic system.
No, that's the, the DEQ.
CDH.
Yeah. But they, they, they've attempted to do some monitor, well monitor, and then just non-point source areas to try to determine if there's, if they can kind of identify areas that's more, more polluting than others.
More nitrates in the water, less phosphorus, all that stuff.
And it's been met with a fair amount of resistance. Nobody.
Really?
Well, people just don't like the idea of exposing themselves to possibly have to drill another well, or, you know, or that clean up their septic, or, you know.
Yeah, oh yeah, it's a, it's a hot button.
It's an interesting deal. Anyway, then, they'll see, so the Waterways Committee itself, like I say, I missed that meeting last time, and I don't think there was anything, any particular on the agenda, there was really no specific deal, but I do know that there's probably a proposal or two coming down, coming down along here pretty soon to request some money for some waterway stuff. And that's always the big challenge with that one for me, is try to really determine, you know, the actual intent of those monies and how to work through that. Because it's just one of those situations where it was kind of, you know, evolved around the motorized thing instead of the, the big picture of water quality and what, and water usage. So it's kind of, seems to be that conflict in the.
I kind of get the feeling that, to me, the waterways is what I'm going to call water police.
Yeah.
It's Sheriff's Department deputies, it's land police.
Yeah.
That's the way I kind of look at waterways. These are going to, these guys are over all the waterways in our county and law enforcement. But you're right, they don't really get involved with non-motorized stuff that much.
Hard for them to see that, and then, and I think that direction actually comes down kind of from the state, to some extent. You know, just that from Department Parks and Recreation, you know, play to play. It's always, it's kind of the.
It's, there's a lot of money in there, though.
There's a lot of money.
Improvements on the waterways. I mean, campground improvements and that kind of stuff, actually on the waterways, though, too.
And this is where I kind of like to see it come into play a little bit more, so, you know, we use a lot, primarily now, we're enforcement. As we, we approved just a couple of weeks ago, quite a bit more for that part of it. And so when you say, well, you know, you've got a lot of money here, let's get some of that spent, what we do, well, buy more enforcement. That's what we, so it's, we said now, and I'm going, well, what else, you know, what else you got to do? You got to have, you got to have projects come in. You have to have projects. You may not be able to prove all of them, but you've got to have projects, in my opinion.
Do enough people know about those projects?
Well, I don't know.
You know, I think a really great example is, like, when Fish and Game did out horse teeth, and they build an ADA accessible dock to fish out of. Those are the kind of things I think that we could maybe look at in some of these lakes around here, is, is an ADA accessible for folks that are, have a hard time getting around.
Right, and it, sometimes that's, I don't, I don't have that magic motor thing on it, you know? So that's where, that's, that's been my struggle, was to try to get, really, you know, get clear on how, and I think that's where we have a good, we have a good chance now to kind of maybe take, maybe a closer look at some of that. We've got new people, we've got some, which I think is, is a good thing, and.
The year I was there, they did a lot of docks. I mean, they were funding a lot of docks. Androsa Head and Grand, you know, McCall was looking at some stuff, so it wasn't just enforcement, there was improvements.
There was.
But you're right, the projects have to come in.
Yeah, so, anyway. So, but it's, it's, I think it's coming along, and there's some good things happening with it, personally, I think it's, yeah.
Before we move on to our next agenda item, there's one more thing that, in part of the resolutions that you got from IAC, there is one from Commissioner Zender in Lewiston that talks about food fees. And you remember when the county took over funding of the health district? Last year, we're, we're funding all the health district now, and part of that discussion that never got fixed is that it's in Idaho Code what we can charge to inspect restaurants. And it's a set fee, and we, of course, we're subsidizing it quite a bit. So we came up on the executive council to talk about, let's take that out of Idaho Code and allow each individual health district to set their own inspection fees. The issue is, okay, Subway down here, it's got to be kind of the same as a Subway in Coeur d'Alene or Idaho Falls, and so there's got to be some cooperation amongst the districts on some of this stuff. But we're, I think the last I looked, we're subsidizing that food fee inspection about $7 million in Idaho.
Oh, wow.
So it's a big chunk of change. So we want to take it out of the legislator's hand, and they want to give it to us. But that's one of the resolutions that's going to be coming up on IAC, so keep your eye open for that and support it. I think it's a, it's a good step because that's our tax dollars. That's going to be coming from the county if we don't fix that.
Bring it back.
Bring it back, and then, and the way it always works with health district is it's, you got so many inspections, I think there's 27,000 restaurants in Idaho, and I don't know what it is per district, it's probably seven or eight thousand per district. I think in our district, we have 12,000 restaurants, but this is the cost for the year to inspect them. So you divide that by your costs, and this is how much it is a restaurant to inspect. And then you're allowed to make up to 5% more for overhead and for the future, but it's a pretty big dollar item, once you look at it on the bigger picture, so that's one that I'm going to work on, too, while we're down at IAC. But just keep that in the back of your mind. Okay, we're going to move on. Our next agenda item is an action item. Jordan, you want to come on up to the mic, please?
Sure.
Appreciate you sending us all the information and kind of what we're talking about today, but we want the public to hear, so come to the mic, state your name and only the town you live in, please. And I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Commissioners, for having me here. I appreciate it. Good to see y'all. I'm Jordan Messner, I'm the Regional Fisheries Manager for Idaho Fish and Game. I live in McCall. And so, just a little bit of background, obviously, you're all familiar with the winter ice fishing parking access on Stonebreaker Lane at the entrance there. People want to park there, but there's very little space for them to do so, and it ends up being a congestion problem out on the highway. When I got here in 2018, I started looking into maybe some potential options to like plow down Stonebreaker Lane a ways and see if we could get a parking area down further on Stonebreaker. I was told that, I guess, you know, just the state of that road, it wouldn't lend itself well to plowing and tear up the road, and we'd be talking about a, a road resurfacing project. So I started looking at other options, and was in, got into contact with Michael Heron, who's the private property owner on the south side of Stonebreaker, just to the west of Highway 55. And he has. And he has agreed to enter into a formal lease agreement with us where he will allow us to do some minor improvements to about a half acre of his property. And then uh, um, he will provide winter parking access for ice fishermen for five years and will be compensated for those five years at three thousand dollars a year for that period. And so um, we've got all that agreement in place. Fish and Game will, will pay that for those funds. And we now need to secure a contractor to do the work, materials for the work, um, as well as some assistance with like plowing and things like that. And so we've been reaching out to some contractors. And so I just wanted to fill you in on what the plans are. Hopefully you all got a copy of the site plans and were able to look at that a little bit. Um, and then I wanted to ask the county's assistants, um, if, if you're able to on potentially any materials that we could be, that we could use for the, the minor improvement work to the property such as gravel, um, or potentially earthwork. I, I, and I don't know if that's even something that's feasible, but if there's any county operators and equipment that could be lent out for, you know, a day or two of some earthwork there. It's just a lot of site grading and, and moving an irrigation ditch about 10 feet away to provide, you know, provide more parking area there. Snow removal, uh, I've been reaching out to contractors but haven't secured anyone yet. I don't imagine that that's something that the county would be able to help with in terms of having the county snow removal folks do that. So um, we'll, we'll keep chasing that one down. The big one that I was hoping the county could really help with is enforcement. So we told this landowner that we will sign it as no overnight parking. Um, and then also he owns a lot of property, all the, all the pasture land out there. And reasonably he does not want people, you know, taking off through the pasture land out there. So we'll be signing around the parking area to say to use Stonebreaker Road to access the, the lake. And so if there was a way that the county would be able to ask, um, you know, the, the sheriff's department and potentially ISP, hey, if you're traveling past there at night and you see vehicles parked there, um, could you ticket them or, or, you know, potentially I would see that we'd, I'd work with you all to figure out what the protocol is going to be if an abandoned vehicle is, um, is discovered at the site. So those are the things that I was hoping we might be able to get your assistance with.
Well, I think, I think the, as far as the sheriff, you know, that kind of stuff, I think that's easy peasy, but you have to sign it accordingly. It has to be signed, no overnight camping, all that. Otherwise you will have violations. We have kind of a small issue down at Cabarton once in a while with people camping overnight down there. And here last weekend they had a big bonfire. That's really not fun to wake up to, but I want to go back and kind of give you some history on it because we, we've been working on this a long time too. Cause I realize it's a big popular spot for fishermen. And we talked once about plowing Stonebreaker all the way in. And the first reaction we got was some parks are wrecked. They didn't want their parking lot plowed because they were worried about damage to the pavement and the bumpers and all that stuff. But the, but the really, the biggest honest issue is that's an east-west lane and it'll blow shut right behind you. And if you're in there fishing and you can't get back out, you know, well, that's going to work. We'll be getting calls at midnight to go plow Stonebreakers. That's why that's never been done. Um, and then I think, and Jeff's going to speak to this too, we don't really have anybody that drives by there in the county snowplow. Everything comes from Lake Fork South and Cascade North and, and it's been hard to find even a local. We, I talked to the guy at Pine Lakes that plows Pine Lakes, that's a private group. See, they'd be interested in doing it and don't want to take on any more, but um, I think it's admirable that you're getting something put together and I don't think a half acre is going to be enough.
I don't either.
I'm worried about that.
I think you're going to need probably three acres.
Yeah.
And so I would work with this landowner that, hey, if we want to come back and do another half acre next year, can we do that?
Yeah, so the difficulty in that, he was willing to work with us on a larger portion of land, but it would be out in the pasture. Cause all he has that's like, you know, somewhat developed or hardened surface right now is where his bus is parked, that half acre. He would, he would let us do it on a larger chunk of land, but he doesn't want to, you know, he wants to be able to use his pasture the next year. And so what we initially considered doing was a frozen parking area only. We do it in the pasture, only plow it after it froze. But you know, as you know, middle of February, when there's still lots of ice on the lake, we could have a thaw that then we have to shut off the gate to his parking area because we don't want his pasture to get torn up. So that was kind of the predicament that we were in there. I agree with you though, and, and I actually did ask him if he'd be willing to maybe carve out, you know, an acre to sell to us down the road to, to do something.
Well, I had the cross country skid out of Cabarton and I plowed that, donate that ground for that parking lot and it's about an acre. And we've seen it fill up maybe three times. Normally skiers kind of come and go, but where you're ice fishing, you're there all day and I think you're going to have a lot more folks staying there all day fish. So um, I would have to refer to Jeff as far as Jeff, do we have any gravel or anything that we could haul down there to, to build a parking lot or how, that's pretty close to good pit, but I don't know if we want to use that. And I don't know what your schedule looks like.
That's what I'm just looking at right here for a half acre, six inches thick, you're looking at 266 yards.
So he only, I can show you the site plan Jeff, since you haven't seen it. He only wants gravel.
Is it on the horseshoe, Jordan?
This is your half acre. Oh, it's gravel in the horseshoe there. So here's our materials estimates.
Even the horseshoe's not, how do you do a horseshoe?
So it's basically just.
Drive in and drive out.
Load in and out, horseshoe shape, people are going to park on the ADA pasture.
Yeah, that'll be graded and leveled and hardened.
So you just need gravel for the road?
Yep.
That's all, that's five truck loads we can donate. Are you, are you, are you moving that enough or you think it's going to soak sink into?
It's pretty hard there already. Yeah.
Start driving on it during.
It's going to be gone in two years and you'll have to come back and do it again.
Yeah.
That's what we've had to do in our parking lot.
He's got a darn good idea of a good start, get those people off that highway. I, I wouldn't have.
There you go.
The equipment, time to do it, surely you can easily donate the material.
Yeah. Yeah, I got, I've reached out to contractors for bids. I've only gotten one back and it was about three times what we anticipated.
Welcome to construction.
Yeah. So I, I actually reached out to, um, you know, we share an office with Southern Idaho Timber Protection Agency. That's a pretty low time of year for them. They have all the equipment. They said they're confident they can get the work done, so.
To plow it, you mean, or to build it?
To build it.
Yeah.
Are you going to put fencing up?
He's already got fencing up, so that's a really nice part about that chunk right there. We'll just have to put snow fences in the back, put a couple posts in the ground to mark where his well is and that sort of thing. And we'll use the fence posts that are existing to put the, to mount the signs on and the snow markers and stuff.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Jordan, would the lease be with Idaho Fish and Game?
Yep. Yeah, so it's a, it's in our access yes program. Designated access dollars for leases like this.
Thank you. Was there an agreement with ITD to use that turnaround to park there as well? Cause I see a lot of guys park there and I thought that was a snowplow turnaround, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think this past year they got lucky on using that one because we didn't get any snow after January 4th.
That's a snow, snow zone right there. It's really weird from there to Roberts, you don't get much snow, but.
Yeah.
Um, I thought, uh, somebody's going to have a problem with that one these days and we go to turnaround.
Sure.
So we got a commitment for the gravel.
Sounds great.
And then what we would need probably is some kind of a, a signage plan so that we make sure that it's signed legally.
Uh huh.
And what's, what it really comes down to is if it says no parking, it has to have the ordinance on the sign as well. A lot of people put up no parking signs, but they don't put the ordinance on it. And so if you don't have the ordinance, you can't, you don't get anywhere in court.
So Commissioners, who would you recommend I, um, reach out to to kind of develop that plan?
Um, probably Captain Dave Stenbaum. Who would be a good one?
On this, uh, for as a management of this thing, how could, how could we fit, Larry, how could we fit into this from the standpoint of the county taking some ownership and um, maybe, I know that you're talking about, well, people to check on the site once in a while, stuff like that, but I, I don't know, it seemed like we ought to consider that in any case in our rec department of having some kind of a partnership in that regards ongoing.
That's about the record, you can go fish out there all the time then.
Yeah, there you go. I'll just, I'll take care of that. No, so this, but I, I don't know, I see, uh, but I'd like to hear from, from Larry and, and his department of whether or not we can, if that's a logical move for us in recreation to move forward to kind of help be a little bit more of a long-term partner and that kind of thing.
It's a little difficult. We don't have snow moving.
No, but I'm, I'm talking about just oversight and then possibility of signing, various things like that where you kind of maybe.
I guess, um, the one thing that we could do in the future, we can talk about it, but you know, put a porta potty in there would be a really good thing to do. Um, because the first complaint you're going to get from the landowners.
Oh absolutely, yeah.
About that issue and that's something that we could probably help with.
Are the bathrooms out at, at the campground open in the winter? They're probably not open, are they?
Just, no, we'll have a restroom there. Um, yeah, so we.
Okay.
Bolver Creek Access Site that we did with Parks, they're going to take over some of the stuff we've done there so that we can lend more resources to Stonebreaker. One of the things we were doing is a portable unit. They said they'll take over the Bolver Creek unit and they'll add the Stonebreaker unit.
And we can drive through and check it once in a while too.
Well, that's kind of my thought is, yeah.
I mean, the recreation deputy would have the enforcement mechanism required.
Yeah, we have some options with two or three people in your department that go by there often. Um, it just seemed like it, somewhat of a ma, of a, of a fit to work together with that.
I'd like to buy like 15 acres and put an RV park there, but.
It'd be great.
You remember, you remember the person that owned the land down by the cattle guard down at the end on the north side? She bought three and we were working with her to, to lease that ground. Then she came back and it was like 30 some thousand dollars a year to lease it and it's like, that's, we, we could never make a deal, but we've been working on this a long time too, so.
Yeah, and you know, the, the one thing about leasing that we always got to remember is you can't get, unless you can show that, that it's a permanent facility, you can't get the grants you need to put those, like I'd like to put up all the toilet in there and do a lot of things, but then everybody driving up, uh, the highway 55, you stopping there, it costs a lot of money.
Yeah. We did that the other day.
Have you gotten a conditional use permit for this?
Bear of bad news, yes.
Need to go talk to Cinda, like for a conditional use permit.
Okay, for anything that's going to require like.
Change of use.
Gatherings and change of use.
Yeah, so.
It's currently, I'm assuming it's currently aground?
But anyway, I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to see at least some, some sort of partnership here going forward, that kind of thing. Firstly, is I cause a location, county interest there?
Yeah, I mean, if I could speak to that for a second, um, we've met with Dave a few times now and um, have chatted about uh, some collaboration and, and you know, even the county, County Parks and Rec taking over like the little pay at site for example. Um, and implementing, he, he let me know that they were talking about like implementing a, a fee-based system that potentially has like a, you know, annual pass, which I think would be, if we're going to do, if, if anybody does a fee-based system over here for the regular users to have an annual pass option is definitely like the best thing we can do for them. Um, and if we do something like that down the road, I mean, we're just trying to punch this thing into Stonebreaker this year to get, you know, a short-term issue solved. But you're right, we're going to see quickly, holy crap, look at all the use on this thing. It's not enough, we need more. And so then I think there's potential to, you know, maybe include that as part of the county's fee-based system down the road where that becomes a site, whether it's Heron's property or somewhere else we can, you know, identify in there, um, to, to add to that fee base. I mean, people that, you see all the parks and recs facilities are absolutely jam-packed every day during the winter too, and everybody has to pay a fee to use those sites too. So I don't think it would be, you know, an issue for our constituents.
Well, I can tell you, Jordan, every time we build something, it's full immediately.
Yeah.
We just can't do it fast enough, but um, I would certainly encourage you to talk to Mr. Perrin about maybe getting more ground. Cause I think he's going to feel more impact than he realizes there. I know I, I do on Cabarton, so uh, when you go out there and there's 185 cars, you go, hmm, we've got to do something different here. You know how that is, but.
Jordan, what about at the end of Old State Road? What's in there? Trying to think where that touches.
Like if you went down Stonebreaker and then right at the end of Old State Road there where it dips behind Sugarloaf Island? Are we talking?
You're talking about the other side from the north.
I'm kind of thinking of coming out from the north.
Cantillon coming south. And I think that's pretty shallow, isn't it? I don't know how deep that water is where that road hits the lake there. Where is that at?
I just didn't know.
You go out like westward and then turn south on Old State Highway and it comes right down to the edge of the lake there, kind of north of Sugarloaf.
And Roberts has the other side of it. He just put a subdivision in on the other side of it and I think there's an access point there, but it's not anything where there's a huge parking area. I was wondering about other touch points.
Yeah.
For that area.
You know, the folks, I contacted the folks that own the property on the north side of Stonebreaker, right there across from Heron's property too. And they're, you know, like kind of a developing company and they basically said that a couple thousand dollars a year for a lease doesn't interest us. If you can do something that's going to, you know, really add value to our property, then we'd be willing to talk to you. So um, if you all have any ideas on, on uh, something that might add value to their property that can also help us accomplish our objectives, but I was not able to come up with anything.
Yeah, like I say, I've been working on this for 10 years trying to figure it out and we almost need a dedicated piece of machinery just to plow Stonebreaker. Cause I'll guarantee you on a lane like that in a blizzard, you're going to be doing it three or four times to get everybody out there.
Yeah.
And it's tough.
And a snow fence was brought up, but that wouldn't be very effective either, I don't think, so.
So if you do go down Stonebreaker, it takes a hard left and going right, that's the developer that you talked with on that side? Cause there is a section right there.
No, this is across the highway thing, straight across.
I wonder if that's B O R that owns the other side of that.
You're talking down Stonebreaker a ways. Yeah, so the properties I'm talking about, Heron's and the other one are right at the entrance of Stonebreaker. That was, that was the lure of them is that you don't have to plow Stonebreaker Lane.
Yeah. Well, I think you got a commitment from Jeff's on the gravel.
Awesome.
Sounds like we're moving in. Yeah, Jeff?
I'll just step back here and talk to Cinda for a minute, but we have, it's in our CUP for all of our gravel pits that we cannot sell to a private individual, which it sounds like we might be able to do something through the CUP. But I have restrictions on all my material. I just thought about this after I said yes.
We can donate it, but we can't sell it.
It's on the record, he said yes.
I mean, we're not, we're not donating it to the Fish and Game, which is a government agency. We're donating it to the, to a private individual, which sounds like we need, through the CUP process, we might, we might be able to get that.
I think, I think we can get this done without getting in too much trouble.
Yeah, I, I think there can be a partnership between the county and Fish and Game on the application.
That's where I was thinking.
Way to do that.
Okay.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you all so much.
Okay, and before we're done here, this is an action item, so I need a motion to authorize this agreement or this partnership.
I, I make the motion that we, um, that the county enter into a partnership with the Fish and Game on the Stonebreaker, uh, us, or um, us fishing parking lot.
A second.
Give me a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Our motion carries. I would get this going quick, cause I know that ground out there is really fine and Cause I know that ground out there is really fine and once it gets wet, it's going to go. So get the gravel out there pretty quick and where it gets too soft. Anything else?
No, thank you all.
All right, all right, that's great. Okay, we're going to move around down our agenda. Our next item is not an action item. This is a discussion with the Cascade Senior Center on the lease of the county home building, so. John, I don't know who's, who's, I forgot your first name, I'm sorry.
Sharon.
Sharon. So, long story short, I think our lease is up this year with the seniors. And we've been, we've had a lot of people express interest in trying to find a daycare center for this end of the valley. I know Commissioner Mopin is working on one at the north end of the valley. We're short daycares and we're thinking about maybe using the northern, the north room of this facility is possibly a daycare center.
May I please read a statement?
Uh, yeah, you can go ahead.
Good afternoon Commissioners Hasbrook, Mopin, and Allen, and Clerk Miller. I am Sharon Martin, President of the Cascade Senior Citizens Incorporated. We understand that the purpose of this meeting is to discuss possible changes to the lease between Valley County and the Cascade Senior Citizens Incorporated for the building occupied by and used for Cascade Senior Citizens Incorporated. And in particular, to return to the county a portion of the facility currently used for our bingo activities. I would like to update you on our current activities and the critical part that bingo plays as we rebuild our organization from the negative impact COVID had on our operations. We started this year with all new officers, directors, kitchen staff, and a new coordinator. Attendance at our Tuesday and Thursday lunches was 15 to 20. Active members were minimal and bingo attendance was also at a low level and we were depleting our cash reserves. During the spring, we began a public relations effort to increase attendance and public awareness of senior center activities. According to U S Census reports available at data.census.gov, Cascade and its surrounding area has 2,368 residents. The median age of these residents is 63.1, meaning that over half of our residents are over 60 years old. Progress has been slow but steady and the cash burn has been steadily reduced through increased attendance and fundraising events. The senior center exists to provide a facility with a welcoming and comfortable environment for elderly citizens to enjoy a nutritious meal, social activities, and to provide a means of support and assistance for everyday problems if desired. In other words, we can provide help if our citizens are having difficulty. Recently, and with the support from other local organizations, both public and private, we opened our doors to provide free meals and a place to relax to those who were evacuated from the fire on West Mountain. Bingo activities play a crucial role in our financial condition, providing approximately 25% of our operating funds or roughly $10,000 annually at current levels. Recently, that has increased significantly, in part due to summer visitors, but also, we believe, to increased visibility due to our developing PR program. Without bingo, we would be in severe financial difficulties and our ability to continue operating would be questionable. We have analyzed the possibility of consolidating bingo into the existing dining area and determined that it is not feasible from a physical standpoint. Bingo necessitates a completely different setup and environment from what is necessary to provide a welcoming and comfortable experience for elderly citizens' meals and social interactions. Bingo area is larger than the dining area and at times, excuse me, is used to near capacity. Also, this area is used for fundraising activities. Reconfiguration, reconfiguring the fixed components of the bingo operation, being the scoreboard, the raise platform for the game manager, and the necessary computer and administrative equipment, and the retail and prize tables would reduce the available dining area, which also has recently been utilized close to its capacity. Additionally, the degradation of the pleasing meal environment we are creating would likely have a negative effect on our meal attendance. Meal revenues being meal donations, we cannot charge for meals. And subsidies from state and federal programs, which are based on meal attendance numbers and together currently generate approximately 40, 40 to 45% of the funds for operations, so the necessity to maintain and increase attendance is crucial. The seating arrangements for dining centered on round tables so as to facilitate the desired social and comfortable experiences. Bingo requires long rectangular tables, seating to provide a clear and unobstructed view of the scoreboard. That would require a complete reorganization of the dining room every week, as well as protecting the meal service equipment and ensuring proper sanitation. The center does not have the resources to do that. And in fact, given the fixed dining and meal serving components, the available area for bingo operations would be much reduced from the current setup. In summary, it's just not possible without negatively impacting both bingo and meal social activities. If we lose the bingo revenues, there is a high probability that the senior center will close.
So Sharon, help me out so I can understand that you guys serve meals on Tuesdays and Thursdays?
Yes.
And you have bingos on Friday?
Yes.
So why is that so hard?
Because on Fridays to get bingo set up and ready to go, I start at three o'clock in the afternoon. And I have to build a fire in that room because it's the only heat for that room. And we also do use it for our fundraisers.
I understand that. I'm just, I'm just trying to keep all my options open here. I think, I think there's some room for give on both sides and that's what I hope that we can kind of accomplish today. The, as you know, as I stated earlier, the, the contract is up right now with you guys on renewing that and we need to sit down and work on that contract together, but part of the issue is we have a facility, we feel like, I feel like, is very underutilized. And we have a huge demand for childcare. So we're trying to, I'm trying to get two birds with one stone here, so to speak.
Our lease may be altered or terminated on March 31st with a 30-day notice. And for a childcare considerable remodel is going to be have to make to that room.
We understand that and we, we feel like we have funds that are possibly available through a grant to do that remodeling. And so if we decide to remodel the north end into a daycare, maybe there's things that we can do for you guys as well on your side to make it more efficient or changes. I know right now we're working on air conditioning in the roof, trying to get that issue resolved and fixed before the snow gets here. And Scott's been working on our buildings and grounds to get that fixed so that that doesn't cave in. There's no need to put a ceiling in until we find the leak and make sure it's not going to happen again, so. I think we can meet each other in the middle here, I think if we can, we can talk about this.
Okay, also, the cupboards in the bingo area are used for bingo records and game sheets. We don't have the facilities in the dining area do all that.
So if we were to look at the entire structure, first of all, so there is, in the bingo room, there is baseboard heating in there, so I'm hearing that doesn't work?
No, it does not.
I'm a little concerned honestly that you guys are using a fireplace only for your heating source. I mean, there, there's a liability to the county on that. I didn't know that. I'm sure that none of us knew that.
It's been that way for a long time.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm concerned about that. If you get somebody that trips and falls and falls into that thing, there's a huge liability issue there. Probably shouldn't be burning a wood stove in the middle of a community event like that. Secondly, so in the dining room, you guys have got a whole second room where the pleated drapes are that come back?
That's where the pantry is for the kitchen and also that's where the board meets.
Okay, well, that's an underutilized space certainly. There's two pantries in the kitchen currently. I mean, where the, you guys had a bunch of storage in there. It's a whole separate room that's right off the dining room.
Yes.
And then there's a third room we couldn't get into. I'm not certain anymore where that was, but if you go to where the bathroom hallway is.
The garage.
Okay, there's a garage there, there's another office.
That is used by Y Cap.
Okay, so Y Cap would have the ability to use childcare facilities also if we needed to do that. And you know what? The thing is, and my understanding is it's been reclouted as a community center, not senior center. So the community as a whole has access to this building.
Yes.
Most importantly, we're not doing away with senior center. We want to help support you guys so that you are there in the future. And if we could share a cook's cost with a daycare, I, I want you to think outside the box a bit.
I want our cook to address that issue.
Okay, let me, let me finish my statement really quickly. If we could share costs there so that we would be able to support you, helping expand the senior network here, I think that's really critical. A lot of senior centers around this area are closing. Council's closed, Numeidos is closed, you know, McCall struggles. We don't want you guys to go away. But we also have a building that's underutilized for what you guys are doing. Let's find a joint use. Let's find something that we can work on together, supporting the seniors while at the same time supporting our youth. Because right now, they're the ones that are being left out of this equation. You guys have got a beautiful facility, kids have nothing. There has to be some way that we can meet in the middle and create a responsible center for our seniors and our youth.
We are also concentrating on more fundraising and more activities. And as I said, everybody is welcome. We turn nobody away.
Well, we're turning away our youth right now because they don't have a place to go. So there is, in our community, there's great need on both ends of that and.
I want Maria to talk to the statement about the kitchen.
Maria, come on up. Please state your name and the town you live in for the record.
My name's Maria Burnett and I live in Donley. And right now I am doing a dual job. I am also the cook, but I also, I'm also the coordinator. And so I cook meals Tuesdays and Thursdays for the seniors. And then the rest of the week I do the coordinating. I have to work with the state to make sure all of our birds are in a line, you know, so that we stay open through them and that we get our refunds back for our seniors that qualify for the refunds and everything. And so for me to be able to cook meals for a daycare also would be almost impossible. We'd have to do some more hiring to be able to get both jobs done.
I think that's, that's an easy fix. I think with two cooks in there, we could cook for each other every day of the week and everybody gets fed. I think that's, I'm concerned you guys feel like we're trying to boot you out and that is not the case at all. I think if we can come up with a list of things that you would like to see there, whether it's maybe meals five days a week or what, and we come up with a daycare that we know we got to feed kids with, I think we could make this work really well and be a very successful community center. Change is hard. I know change is hard.
It is hard. And I, as a younger person, understand the daycare need. But I also have a father and a grandparent that I see their needs too.
Go ahead, Sharon.
Well, we are concerned that bingo would have to be put up and reset up every week. And that's time-consuming and we don't have the people to start to do that.
But you usually start bingo at time of night on Friday? Five?
Seven.
So the kids are gone, there's no one in the room.
I don't.
I don't know if that's going to be really an issue.
But bingo setup starts at three.
I don't know that they could be in the same space, honestly.
Maybe not, maybe not. I know at one time you guys used to have bingo in the dining room.
Yes, but now bingo has grown and so has our dining population. And if we put bingo back in there, we lose dining area and we lose bingo area.
Well, and you guys also have like the foot clinic that comes down St. Luke's folks that use that room as well, so there's other things that are part of this discussion, but I honestly feel like if we all work together and kind of threw in what we would like, we could come to agreement in the middle and make it work for both sides. And it might be such a thing that, hey, part of the daycare operator's job is to set up bingo on Friday night.
So we would have to wall off some of that space out.
I don't, I don't know. There's a lot of rules in daycares that we have to. First of all, we know we can't have a wood stove in there, so we got to put in a heating source. We need a playground. There's a lot of things that's going to go into this, so if we commit, we got to go all in. And these are the things that we're going to research. I just know that there's a lot of people that cannot get a job because they can't afford daycare for their kids. And it's a challenge all over this end of the valley, even Call Two. We've got to fix that because we have a lot of jobs that we can't get people to apply for.
I understand your concerns and, sure.
Sure, come on up. Yep, yep, come on up. We got plenty of time.
Anything you want to ask?
Before you start, state your name and the town you live in for the record, please. Remember, we are being recorded. This is on live. People are listening to this, so.
Yeah, Janet Chapel and I live here in Cascade. And I'm working with the public relations for the Cascade Community and Senior Center. Maria's taken my job over as coordinator. And the one thing that just happened this past week, I'm not opposed to any of this, so this isn't about this. It's about this changes that we've been trying to do to make that building more utilized. Maria is going to be there during the weeks. Our goal was to get those doors unlocked more than just two days a week and a night and have people come in while she's working at the coordinator's office and play games and, you know. We do have a fireplace in the dining room, I'm hoping we can use because we want it to be cozy and warm. So, but we want to like unlock those doors. She's in the coordinator office. People can come in there, play cards, you know, have, sit on the couch, do things. So we are planning on trying to be open at least four days a week in the dining area, not just for the Tuesday and Thursday lunches. My concern, and I know this is all details, right? But we have young, we have kids and then we have seniors, is this, how this traffic flow goes. So now if we have a cook and the kids are going to run, run, run to the kitchen, how does this work? We've got seniors there. I mean, how that whole facility and partnership works. And as far, those are things to think about in details. The details about our seniors who generally can get a little sicker easier and that we have a bathroom, we're going to create a separate bathroom because we have kids that tend to carry germs and things like that. So there are things that, but the biggest, the biggest thing is, is really the financial proponent to it. And the fact that we don't have the people to set up equipment and put down equipment. And like all of the stuff that goes in with the bingo room is just tons and tons of stuff. The daycare would need their own shelving and all of that stuff. And, and that definitely has to be separated in one way or another. The meeting room that you're referring to is, is not very big. Maybe it's remembered to be big, but certainly the space can be utilized better. But just, there's a lot of factors to think about and I believe that everybody from zero to 100, you know, is important. We have to, we have to deal with everybody. We have to service this community. The center is a beautiful, the facility is amazing. But thinking about all those components and, you know, how that flow works for everybody, how the parking works, how, you know, all these different things. But I think there's a lot to discuss to make it work and certainly the very biggest factor is our financial. If we were to say that, hey, the bingo doesn't, you know, that's not going to be capable, but how do we? Cause we, we tend to spend more than we make right now, but that's our goal is to make this place a place where it is for the community and for the seniors. You know, the way that I was told from Area Three who supports. You know, the way that I was told from Maria Three, who supports us with the funding for the senior lunches, is that we, we are a community center with the emphasis on senior nutrition. So, and one of the things that we haven't been able to do is education. And we want to do some karaoke and music after lunches. And so we have a lot of things, but it's the transition. We've had a lot of different, you know, scenarios happen over since the, since the New Year. So we, we definitely haven't been on the map, but that's something that we've been really trying to do. So just keep all that in mind. I think there's a lot to discuss to make it work.
And I agree with you, Sharon, 100%. I think there's a lot of rules to a daycare that we don't know yet, that we're going to have to find out. As you guys know, Pat and Gabby and I came up for lunch or for the lunch break last week to talk to you, and I want to ask them if they either one have any questions or comments they want to make.
I just, it's easy for me to say. I just want to say that I agree with Sherri. We have to keep an open mind. All of us do. And I really think that these are challenges that we're looking at. But the biggest challenge that this community has from an employer's standpoint is that there are people out there that want to work, but they don't have a place for their child. And if there's a way that we can split the center and take care of the seniors' concerns as well as, you know, for the daycare, I'd love to see this happen. I think the senior center is important, since I'm there anyway. I think it's an important part of the community that we need to take care of. I just think there's a way to overcome the challenges that we have.
Well, as far as a fundraiser, in our minds right now, you guys have used that space, and you know what that space is used for. But Bingo doesn't necessarily have to be at that center in order to hold Bingo to raise the money. So, hold on, let me finish, please. We've got the auxiliary in town, you know? There are other opportunities, maybe the school gym, you know, to do some things. But in our minds, those spaces are used the way they're used, and that's what we know and, and what you guys want to continue. But we can think outside the box on being able to do some of this stuff.
At this point in time, Bingo has nowhere else to go. The Legion is utilized on the Friday nights when we have, they're having their dinner.
Could we do Thursday night Bingo?
Then we don't get the tourists.
Sharon, how much, how much, can you, off the top of your, how much does Bingo raise for you a year? Is it 20,000, 10,000, 50,000? I don't know.
She said 10.
Approximately 10,000.
10,000, okay, thank you.
But that 10,000 can easily be made up in other ways.
Yep.
So, I mean, the rent, the rent from the daycare that's going to be providing that space. I mean, we're not going to give them free rent. You guys have had this for a dollar for 10 years. We won't do the same thing with the daycare. There will be some bases to get a reduced rate if they can provide reduced rents or rates for our employees. But there's other sources of income that we can look at as a county to see how to help support you. You know, you are paying for your, your chef alum. A daycare can help provide some of the expenses to have a chef in your, in the facility. There's some expenses that maybe we can jointly share instead of you guys absorbing all of those.
Bingo is an important community activity for all ages, 18 and above, because it is a gambling.
Don't say that on camera. That's illegal.
It is considered gambling by the Idaho State Lottery Commission.
Do you have your, your permit to do that?
Yes.
McCall Chamber got in big trouble for that one.
No, we do get a permit, and we renew it every year. And we send in substantial reports to back up what we've done and what we are doing. So.
I understand that. But is Bingo more important than our children having a safe place to go for daycare? And that's the bottom line to me. We have children that, right now, especially since the four-day week has been put into place at the school, we have kids out running around. They're latchkey kids that should not be on their own on Fridays. So we have to also balance as a community, what's most important. And I understand your need for Bingo, and I understand the want of doing that for the financial benefit. But there has to be some weight given to the children in this community also that are out there that have no place to go. And that's important to me.
The same opportunities for moving in other places is available for the childcare, too.
But this is a county.
It is a county.
Taxpayer-based facility that we've allowed the seniors to use solely for 10 years at no expense. So there is a county asset that we don't want you guys to leave, but there has to be some coordinated effort to find solutions that take care of everyone.
Yes.
What I would like to do is, is not, not make a decision today. I mean, I want you guys, like Sherri said, to be open-minded about this. And we're going to kind of form a little group to look at, what are the rules of a daycare? Is it even possible in that facility? Do we need to have separate bathrooms for kids versus, you know? All those things need to be researched. Today, we're just kind of floating this concept to see how you guys feel about it. And it's kind of apparent you're not really excited about it. I get that. Nobody likes change. And as Sherri said, we have three daycares in this end of the valley, and they're filled, they're full. They can't take anymore. And so we, we can't hire people because they can't find daycare for their kids. I think it would be awesome to put those kids in there during the day. You guys can still have your Bingos on Friday nights. There's no kids there. It's not going to be in your way. And you can share a cook, you can share the kitchen, and we can make this thing work out, and everybody come out happy. And I think will actually be more income for your side of the building. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And, and I think we can, if we have to move Bingo into the dining room, I think that's, might be the only give that you guys would have to do.
If we move Bingo into the dining room, we cannot have as many people come because we have had.
And that might be the answer, though. I mean, so we have 10 less people at Bingo, but we have children that are protected. 20. I mean, but we have children protected at the same time, and we're helping to offset the costs that you're making from Bingo.
We set up 15 tables during the summer. Five rows of three. And we, some of them have four people to a table, and it is completely filled at summer. We cannot do that. And that is when we make a lot of our big money. We cannot do that in the dining room. There just is not room.
And I understand that at that number of people. It might be something that the locals get to come and play Bingo on a, on a different night. I don't know. I don't know what the answer is yet. But we have to find some solutions for our youth, too.
Yes, we have to find solutions for both.
Yep. So if you guys are willing to be open to the concept, we'll kind of keep researching it. Nothing's going to happen this winter. This is probably going to be a year or two out before we even get close to do anything different. We, we got a lot of research and study to do on this. But as long as you guys are open to the concept to look at this, I think we're going to get along fine. Oh, Ed, go ahead.
Well, I think a lot of it, it's really a new thing to me. I went, I took the tour the other day up with, to take a look at it. And so it's called kind of new in my mind. So I was thinking about it, you know, it seems like this is really important for your survival is to make, is the Bingo.
Yes, it is.
But yet, bottom line is, it's a fairly insignificant amount of money based on what I'm seeing with everything else that goes on.
It's approximately.
But it's important to you, and it's important to your survival there.
It's approximately 25% of our revenue.
Yeah, and, but so, there's a couple of things that came to my thought when I was looking at this. Is this, how many square foot, foot is this building? Does anybody have a, off the top of their head, Scott?
I don't have that information, but I can get it for you.
I mean, it seemed like it was a fairly large facility. I'm guessing 4,000 to 5,000 feet. Pretty big facility. It is kind of chopped up a little bit, making it a little bit more difficult. But if it was, if it's large enough, that's the big thing. Is it large enough for the two operations? You know, I mean, if we logically look at it, how much, if you were building facility to do what you want, how big would that facility be? And we, and one of the things that strikes me is we're going to have to do a huge amount of remodeling. No matter what we do, I, I was looking at the wood stove. You guys are depending on a wood stove in there to heat during the winter. I think this is personally, my personal opinion is it's fairly serious liability for the county. We own that building. Whether you keep doing business as usual, that's something that I think has come to light that we probably need to look at. Because I don't think that'd be a very good thing for a wood fire to burn a building down that belongs to the county and has public, you know, welcomes public into using. So.
We generally have the fire going before anybody's there.
Yeah, I know, but it doesn't matter, it's still a fire.
Before anybody leaves.
It's still a fire. And that's where most of our house fires come from, in Valley County, most likely.
Commissioner Allen, 6,605 square feet.
Okay. 6,605 square feet, Mr. Miller. You guys remember that? That's a lot of, that's, that's quite a lot of space, 6,605 feet. So it seems like if we're, you know, willing to work with that, I would say that going forward, you need to put a small committee together, a cooperative committee between the county and, and you guys, and start talking about this. I know Mr. Chairman Hasbro said, well, it's a down the road here or two. It may be, but that probably should start now.
Well, yeah, absolutely.
And I think it.
We need a center other than later.
Wise to just go ahead and get together, hammer this out. Look forward to moving forward that way, so.
And I know, Sharon, that's a lot to ask you guys because you're brand-new to the leadership and brand-new to the board. Like, oh my gosh, I don't want to take this work on. But I think it would be a crown in your thorn, thorn in your crown, as my mom used to say. A star in your crown to work on, on getting something like this available for all the Cascade area. I think it's, to me, I could see a lot of good relationships between you guys and that daycare, you know, helping each other out, sharing a lot of the expenses, and, and everybody's happy. It works out great.
We are willing to continue this discussion.
Right.
But also, according to our lease, on our board of directors is a county commissioner.
Right?
But we don't have that.
Well, I can tell you that's probably my fault because you're in my district, but pretty soon, you are meetinged out in this job. I mean, it, it's, we used to come out for lunches on Tuesdays. Gordon and I would come in when it was going back then. But there's a lot to this job, and this is honestly, you guys are doing such a great job running it. I don't think you need a county commissioner there, but a guy only has so many hours a day.
Right, right.
So if everybody's agreeable to do that, well, just put together a little committee and start working on this and documenting our discussions. And everybody, you know, you know your needs, and we'll hopefully someone that knows the needs of the daycare part of it. If we can't better utilize that 6,605 feet of floor space.
Sean, do you have anything you want to add?
He's hard to hear right now.
I know, I know, but.
I can talk, but I can't understand.
Can't understand, okay. All right.
Wouldn't be able to engage in a conversation with you.
Well, I just wanted to give you an option if you wanted to say something.
Do you want to say anything?
I don't want to duplicate perhaps what Sharon has told you, but I can add, maybe she didn't mention that, you know, the senior center is kind of a turnaround thing. Most of us sitting here are new to it the first of the year. COVID was rather devastating to finish off what apparently were some problems in the operation of the senior center in the past years. But we've got a turnaround situation on our hands. We've made pretty good progress in the first six months. A lot of that due to a PR program, mostly that Jenny was doing. She ratcheted back up our Facebook page. She's probably seen some posters around town. We're just getting started. We're all volunteers in this thing. We're just getting started on, on the PR program, and it's paying dividends. When I started here in February, you know, we were averaging maybe 15 people a day for our lunches. We ratcheted that up to a pretty solid, in the 20s somewhere, maybe the low 20s. And we've bounced up at times into the, well, into the 30s. A lot of that won't hold as we're going into, going into waters. A lot of that is. But I can echo what she's already said, you know, we're, we're got a kind of a precarious financial position. We inherited a, a pretty good checkbook the first of the year, and we've been living out of that checkbook. You know, and our cash burn when we started was not real good. We've managed to cut that down. And in fact, it appears that the second half of the year, we may wind up very close to, if not being positive cash flow for the second half of the year. I didn't expect that. I was treasurer, I was brought in as treasurer for the operation. I didn't expect that. But it's happening. It'll go back down in the wintertime as the attendance drops off. The big thing that we've been trying to do is to raise our membership and attendance. That is key. We get significant amount of our revenue from not only donations for the meals. You know, you know, we can't charge for meals. That's, you know, that's something we're not allowed to do. Because we get a lot of our food from the food bank. We also get subsidies from the federal and state old age agencies, and that is dependent upon the number of 60-year-old people and up that we, that we serve lunches to. That's why it's rather kind of critical that we raise those numbers up, you know? It's worth, up until March, we figure that every person that we can get that has lunch there is, four, three, and three, seven, about $10 or $11, of which $7 is the subsidy. Come 1st of March, we'll drop back to the $4, the standard $4 a month because the extra $3 was a COVID subsidy. And they're going to cut that off at the end of March. Whether or not they replace it with anything, we'll just have to wait and see. So we've been focused on trying to raise our membership and raise our attendance. We've been creating, trying to create a rather welcoming, nice, pleasant environment for old folks to come into, sit down. That's why we got round tables, so he can sit and talk to her friends and this sort of thing. Meal itself is only part of the benefit. The other part is the social interaction, that sort of thing. If we wind up having to be forced into having to cut any of that back or get, create, change the environment, which would, in my opinion, have a negative effect on attendance once, will be in deep financial problems. And in fact, I've said, and I even told. And in fact, I've said, and I even told Mr. Miller over there at one time, that we're in danger of not being able to survive. That's why we got kind of excited about being able to separate the, the lunch social aspects from having to pack all that kind of stuff into the, into the lunchroom, which would change what we're trying to do from a welcoming and comfortable environment into something that would wind up looking more like, you know, institutional lunches. Don't think we can effectively do that and maintain what it is that we're trying to do. You know, we're still not out of the woods financially. We can't go and say that, oh, okay, we could, if we could hold the status quo, well, it would be okay. It won't, because we're not there yet. I don't know whether Sherri mentioned to you, but we'd be happy to, if you wanna send some staff people out, or any of the two commissioners that haven't been there, looked the place over, come out. We'd be glad to show you around, explain what the issues are and what the problems are. We'd be very happy to do that, so...
We've been there. You weren't there.
Thanks for listening to me.
You bet. Thanks, John.
So Doug, are we paying, are we, are they paying anything as far as utilities at all? So we're providing all the utilities?
Yes, we are. We're paying our, all the utilities. We get, I believe, free propane and free garbage pickup.
They shouldn't be, unless that, let me...
Are you paying a power bill?
Yes, we are. And we have lowered that some.
And as far as snow plowing the parking lot?
The county does that.
The county does that?
Scott's been doing that.
And the water bill?
We pay that.
Interesting.
You pay power and water? We, the county pays for the plowing, the garbage, the propane. And what else?
And insurance.
I'm sorry?
Insurance.
Insurance.
Roughly, that cost comes to about $10,000 a month, a year.
And then we, we send you guys about $8,500 a year in actual cash.
Yes, we've only received half of that so far this year.
Actually, I think we approved some of that today, so you should be getting the check here pretty quick.
Okay.
Okay, so we're not out of time. Anybody else wanna add anything or say anything? I think, I think we can maybe get together and we'll form a group, and you guys can talk about it. We can talk about it, and we'll find out all the rules of a daycare and how we wanna approach this and see if we can make it work. It may not work. It may not work, and we're not gonna be bothering you at all. But I think it's something we need to research because it's an issue for, for employment, employees.
And this committee should include both entities.
Absolutely.
Thinking Gabby and Pat on our side, is that who's gonna be our representatives?
Okay. And, you know, it, like you say, it might not work at all, or it might work out just phenomenal. We're not gonna know until we try.
You guys have anybody that's doing your cleaning? Do you have any kind of a janitorial, you're doing that?
My, my husband's a janitorial...
The dishwasher.
He does the dishes, and he does the Bingo Hall, and he cleans the dining area and the bathrooms.
So does he get paid out of your budget?
Yes.
So that's something else that we can maybe cover, too.
No, I'll probably be the representative from the Senior Centers, unfortunately.
Okay, so thanks you guys for coming in. We will let you know when we get a group formed and start looking at this. And, and no decisions today. It's just kind of an exploratory deal and see what happens.
Is there, is there not a couple of people that we could just assign to start dealing with that? I thought you were just now...
Gabby and Pat?
Yeah. Is that, does that work for you guys? So then maybe we have our committee, so to speak, at least to start, you know? Yeah, see how it works out. We, we're not interested in running anybody off. It's just, I hope you got, hope you gathered that part.
Yes, I do.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody, for coming in.
Thank you for having us.
Yep. So our next agenda item is not for 20 minutes, Doug, so let's recess, and let's hear everybody back here at 3.